Y'all get the idea. Sorry. The time is now seven o'clock. The August 19th, Cisro Road Town Council meeting is now in session. You could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could all please remain standing, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you. Thank you, Father. Thank you for this evening. Thank you for this day and this time to be together. Thanks for the great community we live in and all the people who care so much about it. Father, I pray that you put sugar in what we say and salt in what we hear tonight. Or backwards. Jesus made my prayer. Amen.
Thank y'all. Could be stated. Ms. Garrett, if you could take role?
I can. Joseph Cox.
Present.
Jacob Everett. Eric Hayden.
Present.
Dennis Johnson.
Present.
Emily Pearson.
I can't hear you.
I can't hear.
Yeah, we can't hear you down here.
Emily Pearson.
Present.
Dennis Johnson.
Present.
Eric Hayden.
Present.
Jacob Everett.
Present.
Joseph Cox.
Present.
All right. We have quorum with all five members present. Any amendments to the agenda, changes, additions?
Yes, there are two changes. One is under Town Engineer Report to add storm. Right after Morse Landing Drive Project at Byron Street, storm water lining bids. So that's a discussion that occurred last time. And then comments by citizens. We will be moving that from the end of the meeting up to after. So this includes any item from the agenda up after Estridge discusses their proposal. Council will ask questions to Estridge, take comments by all citizens at that point. For that, the Estridge Development or anything else on the agenda, because it will not be at the end of the meeting, follow-up statement by Estridge and then council to have discussion and vote. Also regarding those comments by citizens, I think many of you know it was held or limited to 90 seconds per individual. And that means you're not allowed to pass time from another individual onto you to extend that time. So thank you for all trying to stay within those guidelines.
Thank you. In case you couldn't hear, I'm just going to reiterate. We're moving comments by citizens from the end of the meeting to immediately following the Estridge proposal. In those comments, it can be Estridge comments, it can be anything else about the agenda.
Right.
All right. Any other additions, changes?
Motion to approve as amended.
I'll second Dennis Johnson.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have an agenda? Approval of the prior minutes, has everybody had an opportunity to read over the Town Council meeting minutes from August 5th and the exec session minutes from August 5th? Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
So moved, Dennis Johnson.
Second, Emily Pearson.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good to go there. Moving along to the approval of the claims dated 8/19, has everybody had an opportunity to look over the claims? Any questions, concerns on the claims?
Of all my questions addressed, I'll make a motion to approve the claims for 8/19.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second Dennis Johnson.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pay the bills. All right, moving on to Council Committee Reports, OTC. Ms. Pearson?
I just want to remind everyone that this weekend at Community Park, there's going to be a street festival in the park.
Thank you. All right, nothing to report from EDC? Where are you? Stormwater Management Board? There we are.
This time, Council Stormwater has elected a new board.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Legal Counsel Report, Mr. Cole?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Cisro Jackson Township Plant Commission Report, Mr. Zawodski, Dan?
Good evening, Council. The only thing I had on the report this evening, so later on in the agenda under new business, the Council will be considering two rezone requests from Estridge Development. So the two rezone petitions were heard by the Cisro Jackson Township Planning Commission on May 14th and June 11th of this year as part of the rezone process. Planning Commission's role at that time was to hold the required public hearings and to send a favorable, non-favorable, or a no non-recommendation to the Cisro Town Council after holding the public hearings. This Planning Commission is sending a non-recommendation to the Town Council with seven yes votes and zero no votes on the non-recommendation motion. So I'd like to forward that on to the calendar with a certificate action that you've already received.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Trump. Frank, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing, no data. You?
Moving along, Town Engineer Report, Mr. Bryant?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Wanted to cover a few things on the agenda. The first thing there is water. I don't, there's nothing new to add on the water, so that's the easy one. The wastewater one, Reynolds continues work at the wastewater plant, putting in more concrete, pipe and panels for the new equipment, also working on a sludge building. So everything's progressing towards hopefully September or so, switch over to the new portions of the tank or the plant so they can work on the old portions. They did submit late yesterday, and I emailed late today, apologize, but we wanted to look at it first and make sure we were good recommending it, a request to use some contingency monies. And for that work, it is for the existing control building, which is, gosh, was there probably, been there for 60 years. Had the upper floor has the motor control center and electrical gear in it. The second floor has some pumps in it, return sludge pumps, some polymer pumps and a little bit more equipment, eye wash and a few other things. The lower level of that building has the raw sewage pumps in it. That lower level, when we were done, the raw sewage pumps get tore out and we fill that lower level. It's not usable for anything. But the second level would still house the new pumps for sludge and some polymer equipment and we need to protect, and the upper level will have the new MCC. So we need to retain that building. Over the last couple of years and then the last six months or so especially, Matt down at the plant has showed us where some of the concrete is failing on the structural, which is on the second level, it's the ceiling or the floor of the first level. Some of the, one of the beams especially has lost a lot of its concrete. And if you saw the pictures that we attached there, there's a lot of jokes about wearing hard hats when you go in there now, so just concerned about a little bit of safety. But we want to protect that concrete and those rebar. So we worked, we gave Reynolds actually the name of this subcontractor that does this type of lining work and fixes concrete at wastewater plants. We've had him do work at Walbash, Newcastle, Hartford City, and it's worked out really well. Extends the lifetime of the concrete and, you know, again, everybody we've had work with him has been really happy. So they worked up this price and emailed to us and for $24,380 to potentially get approval from the Council to use contingency monies to do that. They would like to do it when they're doing the demo because that requires less work. Basically, it schedules out well and then also if they don't do it then and they, we don't do it now, it'll get more expensive later because there'll be more conduits running through there that would have to get moved to do the work. So I think I'm speaking for Terry and Matt and all and united that we would recommend doing it now. It's money well spent to increase the longevity of that building. Any questions related to that or?
It was hard to tell in those pictures.
So we weren't aware of this damage on the front end of this project?
Well, we started design, you know, what, three years or so ago and started construction. It was, there was some damage, but it wasn't nearly as bad. And the last six, eight months, it's really started to fall and it's a lot worse than it was. You guys have a question about the photographs that are hard to see?
No, I see them. I see them.
You zoom in. That one picture, and the other thing that that liner would do, you'll see that hatch and that entry, that's actually outside and we want to, we could seal that up. It gets rainwater and leaks, so this would seal that up and keep that from leaking down to the basement as well. But the one drawing with the circle, the beam is really the worst area of that concrete. And we asked them about just encapsulating the beam and they said, well, there's other areas in the floor that are popping too. And in the more floor surface area they line with that, the stronger the whole system is. If they just did the beam, they weren't comfortable that it would stay and last.
When do we have to make a decision? When are they doing the other work?
October, but they want to get it scheduled, obviously. They don't know the, you know, if they wait too long, they may not be able to get their sub in there. But I think we can wait till the next meeting if you're not ready to make a decision.
I mean, honestly, that's what contingency money is there for. I don't understand what you're saying.
Again, it's nothing we have to do, but it's recommended.
I mean, you see rebar, exposed rebar at this point.
Right. That beam has really deteriorated in the last several months.
This would protect the floor or repair the floor above it and also seal the beam.
Which just does the underneath side of it, so it, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the floor service above it, but it still, does seal the floor. And, you know, there's some spalling going on with the bottom side of that and it'll protect that from deteriorating any further. And again, we're not doing the whole floor under there. We could, but then there's a lot more conduits to burn down. It'd be, you know, probably $50,000 plus. And the other side of the floor and the other beams aren't really showing a lot of degradation at this point, so we're trying to keep the, keep the cost as low as we could, but protect what we needed to.
I'll make a motion to approve using contingency funds for concrete repair in the amount of $24,380.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's get it done.
Thank you. Related to West Jackson Street, a few things. One, five weeks ago, Duke had said that they would get their, have their contractor, they use ARC to do their work, would have the switch over ready and ready to schedule and done by August 20th. And looking at the calendar, that's tomorrow and we still haven't heard from them. They have had, two Fridays ago, they had ARC in there and they set a new pole. They've done some work, but they have not coordinated with Morphy, who's the electrical sub, because that's going to require some, some work on the service end on the coffee shop as well as the pizza place to make sure that, you know, they're down as short a period as possible. So I emailed John Schultz with Duke today, but I haven't heard back yet. I don't know what their next schedule is, but we're waiting to hear. They did, by the way, they mentioned Terry, I think, just so everybody knows that they decide, when they got out there, they decided, after we'd all met several times, they decided that their transformer was undersized that was on that pole. So now there's going to be like 12 or 15 people or so out, shut down for some period of time. They say they're going to reach out and coordinate that with them, but basically they're taking the opportunity to fix something that was undersized to begin with, so, which makes sense why they're there, fix it right, but.
So where that power box is, we're on the north side of that, we're not extending all the way out to the road cut, correct? We're going to minimize the concrete on the outside so that the fence can be?
Yeah, it's going to be, that panel is sitting right at, there's only going to be a curb width behind it to the north.
Where does the fence sit then?
Right behind it.
On the curb or right?
On the curb.
You know, the rest of the fence is going to fit on the curb?
Yeah.
I figure they can sit.
If we put it, well, if we put it down on the pavement, you're going to have more to?
Not in the pavement, back on the concrete pad is what I was talking about?
Uh, we can, if that's what you want to do. But there, you know, we're going to lose, you know, I mean, we're just going to lose more seating area and we're not going to gain anything. You're going to have a foot, foot and a half of curb and concrete outside that you can't do anything with. You know what I'm, you know what I mean?
I guess I don't know what other communities do when they put Israelis up from an aesthetic standpoint.
Normally, they're along the curb line, is what I've seen, but.
Okay.
Maybe it's a visual too for anybody that's parking or anything, not to hopefully drive through there and get panels and people and.
I took pictures at one time. I'll try to get back to you in a minute.
Okay.
Okay. But we're going to minimize that distance. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the goal anyway, unless you tell us otherwise.
No.
I mean, we can still change it.
Where the, or where the pavement cut is, I mean, that's a large area behind it.
I don't know why they cut that pavement there, but they, they cut it too far north.
I just want to make sure we weren't putting concrete all the way out there. Okay, thank you.
No, and we could, because there is kind of a little quote unquote wasted space there, but it's almost a necessity because if we don't put some more space there than the parking spot to adjacent to that, the car won't be able to get out. So we have to have that space there for turning radius and get the car that's parked closest to that room to get out. The reason for it.
Okay.
Also on that project, we did that pay application five that was sent in last week with recommendation for payment. And do we, is that on the agenda? Do we need to re, get that, have more discussion and hopefully have that approved for payment or was it in what you already?
I don't remember if we did it last time or not.
We did not. I just, they just gave it to us last week. It was just emailed last week, so, yeah, so this is pay application five.
I believe it was paid though, 100%, but if it needs to be approved, I'd approve.
And again, we broke down, there's, there's a number of things that are grant, come out of the grant funds and a number of things that are not grant.
Is that Midwest?
I'm sorry.
Is that Midwest?
Yes, Midwest.
Thank you.
So the total payment is $341,365.20 and it included a lot of concrete work, electrical work, street light work, a lot of miscellaneous things as well, so.
How, regarding that payment, does Midwest, Aaron, maybe you know, does Midwest hold the back dollars from the electrical contractor? I forget what it's called.
You're talking about the retainage?
Yeah, the retainer.
Well, we withhold retainage from them, but we have no control over what the contractor's agreements are with the subs. I can tell you, I've talked to Midwest and they say they are retaining the same retainage from their subs.
Okay, so there is money held back?
But we don't, we're not privy to their agreements, but they told me that.
But there is money held back for globes in case.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's five.
Yeah.
At this point, it'll be, it's right now, it's basically about 10% of what they've been paid has been held back. And then when we get to the end of the contract, it reduces, we don't hold anymore and it's at 5%, but that's still, it's a healthy chunk of change for them. I mean, it's probably, probably at least $70,000 or $80,000 at that point, retainage.
And that covers the globes and LEDs and any of that other stuff inside there if needed?
Right.
Okay.
I do not have it keyed, so if we want to get it approved, I'll get it in the next.
I'll make a motion to approve pay application number five to Midwest Paving.
I'll second that, Dennis Johnson.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's get them paid.
Okay, do you guys, do you guys want to talk about the globes tonight? I know there's a lot on the agenda or you want to punt that to the next meeting or?
We can hold off until the next meeting.
Okay.
I guess the one part with the globes is if you look at the globes coming across and you look at the drones, they have a light inside or a lens inside also or something inside those, just to make sure that when they replace that frosted to clear, it has, they look the same per, per spec, right? It's not just a lens change or a globe change.
Right, and we asked about that and if you look at the shot drawings, they're the exact same model. We've been told that their LED has just evolved and that's just what they make now. I need to firm that up, but that's what we've been told and I have firmed up, it's the same, same model, exact same model number from the same manufacturer, at least compared to the East Jackson project. I'd have to look again at this one, but.
I mean, the top, the LED sits up top and then there's a last piece that's frosted inside, the clear. And if you look at them as you go across, we want them all to be the same.
The problem is I don't know if they make them anymore. That's what I'll have to find out.
That's what our drone specs.
Well, they spec a model number, which they claim they've provided, so if the manufacturer changed it, there, there might be some issue there, but.
Okay.
I'll check into it more though.
Thank you.
Finally, I kind of sent an email this afternoon, some, because I wanted you to have something. You know, when we met last Tuesday, you asked us to look at different places on North Byron to move the lights and costs associated with it. We met with, actually met with Dan and Terry the next, the next day. Then we met, I met with Midwest Paving that next day as well and gave them, tried to pick their brains through what they could do, gave them options on what we were looking for pricing. As of yesterday, I didn't have any pricing, but we'd gone back and forth and asked several questions. But I was able to get from them at least some information and then I was able to talk to them on the phone with them and their electrical sub and get a lot of more information and come up with a conservative cost of the northeast corner and the northwest corner and pros and cons and thoughts, and that's what I emailed to you. Basically, we've got two options on either side as far as if we want to move lights, do we want to move both lights or one light? And then of course, we've got to figure out where we want to move them. Right now, we had them priced up, well, I worked with them and we got a conservative, we got a price to move both lights out on both sides and of course, it would come out, would come out to where the seating area is at, out along that curb line. We have to decide exactly where. On the east side, I think Dan and Terry and I looked at and thought it'd make more sense if the light to the north, moving it out, because the space that's going to be between the cabinet and the curb is kind of, kind of too small for a seat. So it seemed like putting a light on that far north end between those would make sense. Of course, if you did that, presumably you'd want to mirror it on the same corner on the west side. It looks like, I mean, it really looks like by the time we do that and those lights are getting closer and closer together, we could also strongly consider not moving, just having that one light on each side because we got to ride another light around the corner. But, you know, it's really up to you. We don't need it for light, but it's whether we want to go, there was always two lights there before. So whether we want to put two lights back is questionable. We could take those two lights and save them and use them for the, you know, use them for a future project or something too, but.
Were the old lights at, out at the curb?
No. If you look at, I went back to our survey drawings and you can go to Google Earth and look at the street, street view and look at that too, but those two existing lights on each side were within, within a few inches of where we have them. I mean, basically, like on the northwest side, if you look at it, the one to the south is about two inches difference as far as located from the face of the building. So the thought when we went out there was, hey, we can still get these small tables where they were, we can still have the main walkway that was where it was before between the lights and the curb and then we don't encumber anything out in the seating area to put lights out there and try to fit tables around. That was a thought process, but, but they're, they're basically where they were before because initially, if you remember, we weren't even, we weren't moving those lights, we were just rehabbing them, putting them back. And then after it did, we got, we signed a change order to go ahead and replace all the lights. But they, the contractor did not, was not interested. But they, they, the contractor did not, was not interested, didn't get them to pry, either, either the sub or the main contractor there. As far as just trying to take out pieces of concrete and, and not taking it all out, they just don't think, they'll think they'll damage it trying to get it out, the existing concrete, and they don't think it, they don't think they can just do, they'll do it and it'll look good. I mean, so, which, so they didn't even, did, would not even price those options that would be less expensive, but they were not comfortable with doing.
So on the east side, it doesn't look like there was any lights, there is just a light, there's just a light on top of the street pole? On the west side?
Correct, correct, the west side it is.
There's just one. Problem is they're lower by four feet.
You look, you're looking at Google Earth. Yeah, they're lower, so, you know, whether, you know, they also had two fixtures on them, right, too? So there were some differences, but as far as location on the west side is basically where they were.
When do we have to make the decision?
Right now, they, you know, part of the other issue is their electric, their contractors sub that did such great work is basically telling them they're not coming back until after November, so, which isn't going to work. So they're going to have to self-perform any concrete work, including, you know, what they haven't done on the east side, or find another sub. So they can't really give me a schedule, I've asked, but they're working on it. Of course, right now, they don't know what their work scope is until we tell them what their scope is, yeah, on the west side. That's a long way of saying, uh, uh, we could probably wait another meeting, but I don't think we'd go beyond that.
To, to me, we, I don't, at this point, I mean, there's no rush to do the west side by the carpet shop. Right? I mean, if we decide we want to do something later, we can hire a contractor to do it at a later time. That, that's my opinion. The east side, um, I think we need to make a decision what we're going to do. The we, the west side's already done, all that work's done, so. The east side, do we want to do one light, do we want to leave them where they are, do we not want to do zero lights, which I don't think's a reasonable. To me, they're adding double doors there. I would say if we push, do one light down towards the electrical box, I don't know if it can fit between the box and the, the curb or not.
It can, there's about three feet there.
Does that look, do you have anybody aesthetically that can look at that and say what it looks like?
I could, but everybody would have a different opinion, so I hesitate to. I mean, we looked at it, we thought it'd be okay. But if everybody walks by, have a different idea probably.
Do you agree with that Terry, that approach? I mean, clearly the west side, there should be no rush. Yeah. Let us regroup and think, not, not rush into a decision.
Right, I, I did, but then you guys are getting some sense.
Again, there, there won't be a, there, it'll be like the rest of the concrete, those are under the concrete, so all you're going to see is the anchor bolts coming up, so, and the cover. So it won't be like in the grass, so it'll be.
So Eric, are you just thinking one post on the east side?
Yeah, I just don't want to rush into a decision again.
Okay.
Make the wrong decision.
So you want to wait?
That's, well, I don't know that we have time, but what are your guys' thoughts?
I mean, my thoughts are you've got two on the west, you've got, you've got them on the corners too, right? Near the corners?
One of them is a corner, there's kind of one on, around the corner.
I mean, that seems like a lot of light there in a pretty compact area, so I think one on the east would be sufficient.
Mr. Strong, he's spent a lot of time down there, sorry to put you on the hot seat, what's your thought?
It's, yeah, there's, there's one there though, but yeah. Right, and the, and the space between the panel and the curb there and the seating areas is, again, you could put, you could put a flyer platter there, you could put a trash can there, you could put some other things there, but it's probably, there's really not enough room to put a table in that very corner, so seems to fit to that, but again.
Yeah, I've been down there and I've looked at it and I think Mr. Strong and I, and I believe Terry talked about it. Do you have any opinions?
Is Broncos putting in a side door?
Yes.
Did you mention? There has been discussions of that.
Yeah, we found out when we were there walking and talking to them that they're going to put a double door right there where their window is. So we were going, the light was going, one of the lights was going to go there, and that's why we wound up moving that one further, a little further north, because we found that out and we didn't want to block their door. And we asked, actually had to measure down and make sure we got the concrete level there when we poured it, the same elevation as their floor elevation inside, so they didn't have an ADA issue, so.
I was just going to say, if they're going to put a door there and we're going to one light, move it out of the way of the door. So that, that doesn't become a problem.
Right, and it's north, it's not in the way of the door now, it's north of there, but the question is, do we want to move it? You know, do we want two or do we, if we're going to have one light, I think it needs to be at the north end of the seating area, that's just my opinion.
I agree with that.
So it's just whether we want to go ahead and put one to the, whether okay with it by the panel or whether we want to move the other one to?
Move it a little further north where that big step is. To me, it's one of those two choices, right?
Which big step, I'm trying to.
The big drop where that curve is, we're going to put a railing already.
Right, we're turning the railing to the north, yeah.
Yeah. The big curb, right, yeah.
Right. And they're looking, they're, by the way, they are looking, they're supposed to shoot that elevation and we can raise that and let up a couple inches where we pay that drop will be less, but.
So to me, it would be one of those two places, probably preferable to the west of the box, if it works. Jacob, do you have thoughts, you've been out there and.
I'm fine with one on that side and I'd be fine if you and Dan go out there and tell them where to put it. Honestly, I'm not trying to put it on you, but somebody's got to go put a mark on the ground, so. Or we can wait.
I, I, I'm for somebody going and making a mark and putting the one light there.
If you don't want to do it Eric, I'll do it or?
No, I mean, I'm the one that's complaining the most, so.
No, it needs to be addressed.
So I'm, if you guys are good with that, so the, the decision is one light on the east side of Byron and then Dan and I and Terry will work to pinpoint it, the correct location.
Is that a motion?
It's my motion, that's my motion.
Alright. You good there Keith?
Yeah, and I, I'd be happy.
Do you have a motion for that?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I didn't, no, not for that.
If we don't need a motion, I'm not.
I don't think we needed a motion for that.
Okay.
Sorry Jacob.
And I'd be happy to, if you schedule, you're going to do it, if I can be up here, I'd be happy to look at it with you as well, but.
We will try to get it done this week.
Okay. Well, we can at least go the contractor direction and so they can plan from tonight, it sounds like.
Yes.
And, and really, they can't move, do much with those lights until, I mean, they can't really, they can't pour the concrete there and they can't pull the poles until Duke gets their stuff scheduled. But if we give them direction, they can go ahead and get the lights moved on the east side and be ready to pour concrete.
Get the, the pads moved?
The foundations for the lights and the, and the wiring and have it, and have it ready for them.
We'll go look at it.
Okay.
Maybe after this, we'll see what time it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item four, did anybody have anything else on West Jackson or?
No.
Okay. Item four, twenty twenty-five Community Crosses Managing Grants, that's the one on the east side where we're widening the road and repaving and then Morse Landing Drive, milling and res servicing. We did, uh, talk to the contractor, DC Services, they were, awarded that project and we do have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for September tenth. And then they're planning to mobilize and start the work there later in September and like I said, they'll, it should be done in three or four weeks at the most. Weather permitting. Some more to follow on that. Morse Landing Drive Project, that's a Stormwater Utility Board project. Uh, we, we, we talked to the, to Terry and Dan and the board members on that and it looks like, at this point in time, I think we've decided to bump that bid into, receive bids on January, so we have the contractor can start the work early spring, get it done and be ready to pay when the paving company, paving company's open. Uh, we just need to firm up that date. When we're going to do that. But looking to advertise the bid in early December, get bids in January and be ready to hit the ground so they can get that done. We were, we're getting into the point where it was getting too tight to, to try to pinch contractors into doing it this fall and we were just going to increase the bids. Now, I think, uh, Eric, you added the Byron Street Stormlining quote.
That's correct, we tabled those, did we table those? We didn't table, took them under advisement.
Yeah.
Okay. So yes, we, so you reviewed those and Terry reviewed those and?
I looked at them today again and of course, we had three quotes, one from Inliner was the apparent low of forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. Uh, In situ form was another quote for forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty cents. And then SAC was, uh, the third quote for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. In review of them, it looked like all the documents was in the apparent low bidder. We had one question related to that, just to make sure that they had accounted for that size change. And I went back to the emails that Terry had sent them and you told them about it, they were notified of it, it just wasn't clear in their proposal, so I left them a, I left them a message to confirm that, but I, I didn't hear back from them today. But assuming that pans out and they confirm that they've got that accounted for, then.
Who was that with, was that?
Inliner, the apparent low bidder.
Have you worked with them before?
Yeah, these three companies are kind of the, some of the biggest lining companies around, but Inliner is in Orleans, Indiana and yeah, they, they do a lot of this work and they, they do a very good job. In situ form's another large company and SAC actually, they're, they're out of state, but they actually did, when we did a sewer project here in town, we had them, I don't know, we probably had ten or fifteen thousand feet of lining on that job and they did that and we had really good luck with them. So they're, they're all very reputable. So I don't know, Aaron, if you had anything else? I mean, it was a quote process, I believe, so there weren't.
Right.
Bonds, insurance is not required. I mean, we still have to have insurance certificates, but.
Right.
No performance or payment bonds or anything like that?
No, not, not for a bid because it's below the dollar amount.
Below the threshold.
So what, what was the issue you reached out today for?
In their proposal, they have something noted in their standard exclusions that says they, you know, they could get paid more if there's a pipe size change. Well, that bothers me because I know there's a pipe size change at the manhole and they were sent that information. So I just want to make sure that, I think it's just a standard, you know, CYA that they threw in there. I just want to make sure that they agree that they've got that included. So that we don't wind up with a five thousand dollar change order off the bat and they, and then if that was the case, then they might not be the low bidder. Our quarter. So if everybody.
Is there any time commitments on when they would get this done or when we want them to get it done?
I didn't, I did not talk to them about that, so.
I assume we want to get it done as soon as we can?
Yeah, we're, I mean, it's a very small job and these guys are going all over doing millions, millions and millions of dollars projects, but we, we would like to get it awarded just so we can get it done this fall before, you know, we get heavy rains again or could have problems.
But I don't know how we approve it, but if we don't get an answer to that, right?
I, I had suggested maybe you could approve a warrant at Inliner, subject to getting confirmation that they have that included. But that's just a suggestion.
Terry, you good with Inliner? Are you good with Inliner?
Yes, I'm actually good.
Yeah, a little history. They actually used to be owned by Reynolds Incorporated, that's building your wastewater plant, doing your wastewater plant project, but then there was, Reynolds actually sold off to Lane, sold their entire company, all divisions of it, including Inliner and then now, and they're, so they're still owned by Lane, I believe, but then Reynolds actually bought back their plant division and they're totally separate, so. A lot of things, a lot of oddities going on, but. But they're, they're a very good company for sure.
So Jacob, were you making a motion?
I'll make a motion to go with Inliner, uh, pending contingent upon confirmation that the pipe size change is not going to be a change order in this situation.
I'll second that Dennis Johnson.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Sorry.
Thank you. That's all I had. Did anybody have any other questions for me or?
Mr. Freeman has a question for you.
Uh, Stormwater is paying for this, do we have to get it put in?
Uh, it ranges in forty-one, six seventy-two to forty-nine, nine twenty, but the low, low bid is forty-one.
Inliner was forty-one, six seventy-two.
Right.
There's a contingency or there is a exemption.
No, if there's a change order due to the pipe change, then my motion says that we're not proceeding.
Then we'd have to come back.
You'd come back, right?
Probably award to the second.
That was my intent, sir.
It's your check, it's your check, but we're not spending more, we're not, we're not having you spend more than forty-one, six seventy-two, a lot of further discussions. Storm, I meant Stormwater.
What could potentially happen Bruce is if, if they say that is a, an exclusion and it will cost more money, then we would probably come back, have to come back and get run in by your board, you're right, we should have talked to you and then counsel and then award it to the second bidder, which would be forty-two thousand, two sixty-five. Right, no digging, right.
I apologize for making that motion. No, no, I, I do, we should have made sure you were comfortable.
We're going to ask.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks Bruce.
Are you good Keith?
I am, any, anything else for me right now? Okay.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Moving along to old business, which there is none. Moving along to new business, I have a couple ordinances, ordinance number zero eight dash one nine dash two zero, two five dash zero one and zero two. Water transfers to improvement and wastewater transfers to improvement. Ms. Gary, this are fund transfers, correct?
They are, a result of my, I was aud, town was audited last week and we've got to have, uh, ordinance in place to transfer money from our operating to improvement to pay the bonds, so, um, we're, Aaron and I are sure there's one exists, but we couldn't find it. So I just need approval for those, please.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinances of zero eight, one nine, two zero, two five dash one, or zero one and zero two. Uh, ordinances.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Moving along to ordinance number zero eight dash one nine dash two zero, two five dash zero three, which is a rezone request from Ag to R three, um, by Estridge Homes. You guys want to go ahead?
Thank you for letting us present our Hingle Ridge project tonight. My name's Clint Mitchell, I'm the CEO and one of the owners along with my partner and the Estridge family of Estridge Homes. We're a local builder that's built semi-custom homes in Hamilton County since nineteen sixty-seven. Uh, this is our first project proposed in Cicero in Jackson Township. We do have several employees, uh, the. several employees that live in Cicero, have attended Hamilton Heights themselves, or currently have kids in the school. You know, in general, we live in our communities, and really take a lot of pride in, in the neighborhoods we develop. It's kind of part of our company legacy of what we do to add to the communities. We spent the last several months working on this beautiful property, on our own design iterations, as well as meeting with neighbors to continue to make improvements on how we can make, make changes that, you know, address some of their unique concerns. And then, along the way, I, I believe for us, it's improved through the process as well. This project represents a neighborhood that actually has the highest percentage of preserved green space that we've ever done in, in any project we've, we've completed. It has the lowest density of any project we've done, and it will have the average, the highest average price point for any projects, and those, those go back over 50 years of, of doing, doing projects. It centers around what we're calling a 40-acre Hinkle Preserve. We wanna take advantage of the, the dense woods, the deep ravines and ridges, the, the Hinkle Creek that divides the property. We'll be building trails, creating a park, having a pedestrian bridge that connects the two sides of the neighborhood through this preserve area. As far as what we will be building, we will spread it across four, what we call collections of homes, primarily targeting empty nesters and families. We will start with our smallest ranch homes that we expect to start around $750,000. And then, we have two larger collections of homes that will likely start, one of them at around $900,000, going up to a million and a half, plus or minus. And then, on Anthony Road, we have kind of a serene, smaller estate section that has larger lots, and I expect most or all of those homes to exceed $2 million by the time we build those. One of the important components of the property is, it, it sits in the Rebus Carson Drain, which has been a, a problem flooding area for the county for many years. And we've been working with the county surveyor to address the, the drain on our property, and, and then all the way about a mile south of our property to reconstruct that drain, taking it all the way to where it opens at Hinkle Creek. And through all this work, we have agreed to, Estridge will pay 100% of the reconstruction cost, and we'll do the work. It'll be the first thing we do. There'll be no assessments to existing homeowners that sit in this legal drain area. Through the process, we have made lots of changes, some small, some, some larger. We have reduced the number of homes from 187 down to 170. That comes out at right about 1.4 homes per acre, which is actually just a little below the R2 target density. We've increased side yard setbacks during the process. We've increased our lot depths. In total, we are now preserving 49 acres on the site, which is about 41% of the entire property. We've also increased perimeter landscape buffers on the perimeters that face or back to existing homes. We've increased the lot sizes there, so that there are just fewer homes boarding, bordering the existing homes. In the, we've had a series of, you know, one-on-one neighbor meetings. We had a, a public neighbor meeting prior to having two area plan commission meetings. And after the last APC meeting, we did come away with several commitments that we are making for the project. A couple of these have come, and some follow-up remarks that we've gotten since that APC meeting. I'll list, I'll list those, and we can discuss some of those later. We will, some of this is clarification or requested additions. We will landscape in the perimeter buffers at a minimum of one tree per 10 feet. We'll provide road and perimeters per county, highway department review, and their approval. The amenities will be installed at the latest, the second year of breaking ground on the property. We will install dry hydrants near the ponds with adequate accessibility for truck pumping operations. We will install road markers and a warning siren system that will be installed as the first, during the first phase of development. As I mentioned earlier, the Rebus Carson Drain reconstruction will be completed and funded entirely by Estridge, located from our property to the south end of the drain at Hinkle Creek. We have agreed to add an additional fire truck, road access, to the east side of Demming Road, to that portion of the neighborhood. And then, finally, at the last meeting, there was a request that we bring this to council after a, some type of resolution related to the utility district. We will be using sewer and water to our side as it expands throughout the county. And last month, in July, the county commissioners approved an ordinance such that any existing residence that sits along a route that has a forest main sewer will not be required to connect a sewer. So, that, that's, I know, had been in process, and it actually was passed last month. So, we are excited to bring this project to the area. It'd be great neighbors. We, we think we're gonna set a high standard of, of the kind of developments that can be done, and, and something that, when we're finished, everyone in the area is gonna be proud of. My colleagues are here with me, and we're all here to answer your questions, and we look forward to doing that tonight. Thank you.
So, you said dry hydrants and ponds, correct?
Yes.
At one point, we made a commitment, road improvements per Highway County, Highway Department Traffic Study?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so you guys are committing to that, and that's a blister on 236 at Demming, and road improvements along your neighborhood of Demming and Anthony?
That's right.
Blue markers for hydrants on the road, you committed to that, correct?
Correct.
Talked about the warning siren first phase. Number of trees around perimeter, you're committing to one tree per every 10 feet. However, we're not saying, you're not saying it's gonna be one, that's just to address the number of trees.
Not exactly. It'll be the aggregate. We are, we intend to meet with neighbors to strategically place them, you know, so that there may be some that are closer to the 10 feet, some that are further, but in total, if you look at the-
That's the number.
Yes, that is the, the count.
Okay. Admonities within two years of starting the project. That means the first house built, that means roads-
That would, that would be, start moving dirt, from, within two years of that. Earthwork, from two years from starting earthwork.
In the PUD, it talks about if Estridge decides to back out, that it would revert back to R3. But even if one phase is backed out-
Aaron, maybe you can help me out. How do we ensure that goes back to, I'm sorry, go back to AG.
To Ag, correct.
How do we ensure that goes back to Ag? PUD, how it's worded, covers that?
Yeah, it, it's in the PUD, if, if I recall correctly, that it says it would revert back. And so, it would go back to Ag if, if they don't proceed with the project. And so, we would just monitor it, and either when they failed to go forward, or when they notified us they were abandoning it, we would revert back to the Ag designation on our map.
Okay. And we're okay with that? And then, we've had, I've had quite a few concerns about flooding along the Rebus Carson Drain. And so, I mean, that's, that's definitely a hot spot, and there's a lot of concern about, is it retention pond? The, the retention pond-
Right.
-not changing the water flow. So, you guys are doing work there, and you're adding retention ponds that have slow release. Is there a possibility in the warranty bond to keep some money aside, that if there is still flooding issues along, sorry, I'm getting you pulled as well-
Yeah.
-that Rebus Carson Drain, that there is money set aside for a period of time to go back and try to address those issues?
Um, I'll, yes, I'll get to the second part. I will, wanna just comment on, we are, this has already extensive retention ponds, more so than we typically find, primarily because we are building one pond specifically to retain everything from the Rebus Carson Drain that's north of our property, that's not part of our property. That is an additional pond that wouldn't normally be provided. And then, as you say, we're reconstructing the drain, and then we'll retain all of our own water from our site, on our ponds. As far as our bonding goes, how does that, is that typical? I'm gonna get some help here from my development folks.
Yeah. I'm assuming that you guys have, you have performance and maintenance, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, you know, within that three-year-
So, this, if, if there's flooding along that Rebus Carson, that the maintenance bond could be used to try to address that?
I, I say, I say yes, assuming that the only way that that could result is if it wasn't constructed properly, 'cause it's designed properly. It would be designed properly. I mean, in order to comply with the applicable standards, you're over-designing the site, typically.
Okay.
And so, the design is not gonna be the issue. It'd be the, it'd be the construction. And if there's faulty construction, that's what the maintenance bond is for.
Okay. All right.
And we've, this is not our design. The county surveyors had the design done, that we will be building to those specs.
Thank you.
What about stormwater during the construction period? Any thoughts on that? How, how do we manage that?
Well, the, the first thing we will do is to do the Rebus Carson reconstruction and building that large retaining pond that is specifically for the drain. And then, we will also be digging our ponds at the very early stage. I mean, you'll see ponding take place in the early part of the earthwork on our property. I don't think there's anything else that's normally done as a precaution of that, but we build during and after. We can't put any water off of our property.
And again, you're taking it, you're doing that work all the way down to Hinkle Creek?
Correct.
Where it connects to Hinkle Creek? Thank you. Thank you for the long ride. Do you have any more to answer, or what else?
I had a question regarding, you know, blister. You said there would be one at Demming, per the county's recommendation?
At, at 236th and Demming, there would be. And then, along Demming, we will have one, we'll be widening in front of our property and have one on, on either side, correct? Passing best for the east and west of Demming, at our entrances.
When it comes to the blister, is that going to be, I think if you go out west of Cicero, there's one that goes into the MI Tamarack-
Okay.
-where you can get two, at least two to three vehicles that are pulling into the addition before the third or fourth starts to impede the traffic. Is there gonna be a similar blister, so that's, or is it just gonna be one for, one room for one car?
You wanna answer that, or the standards?
On Demming, the standard was a 150 stack with a 100-foot taper, and we're following the guidelines by, set by the traffic study.
So, would you say that's similar to the one at Tamarack on the west side of Cicero?
Yeah, I can't speak to Tamarack. I'm not sure about that one.
And there is no blister designed for Anthony and 236?
Yeah, that hasn't been designed yet, that Anthony passed through yet. That'll be, that'll be designed during the next stage of construction documents with county road approval. But right now, it appears that there is enough room for a passing blister on that as well, but we haven't actually designed that one, as we have-
Is your intention to put one there?
Yeah. So, it's, yeah, per the recommendation of the traffic study, they, they, they asked for one, yes.
So, previously, sorry, just to clarify, it's previously at Anthony, I thought it was stated, there was not enough room from the bridge to Anthony for a passing blister at that intersection?
Well, for a trail, 'cause of the cemetery?
No, the passing blister on 236 is what he's talking about. So, at Demming, at Demming and 236, on the westbound road-
Yeah.
-there will be a passing blister.
Right.
And previously, it was stated that there would not be because of, on the westbound side, because of the bridge location.
Yeah, the thought was that that road's able to taper slightly into the, to the east, possibly, to allow, to allow that. That's, that's what hasn't been designed yet. But that's, that's the intent, to try to still accommodate that.
Okay. I was not aware of that. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
I kinda wanna blister there, so I'm hoping it gets, it can get put into the design.
So, Aaron, I, I guess, depending on what the county does, from their road study, how do we, how do we note that?
I mean, I believe they've provided us with a copy of the road study that has the recommendation-
That was not in that-
That was not in-
That was not in that road study.
When, when was the, are you talking about the addition to what was in the road study?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
So, is it-
So, the one at Demming and 236, that's in the road study?
Correct.
So, we're talking about Anthony and 236, the westbound lane is what you're talking about, correct, Dennis?
Yes.
So, there's the bridge, and then there's the intersection.
Right.
And this is saying that there's putting a blister to go through, but I think that takes you into that intersection at that point?
Okay. I'm, I'm not clear on what your question is.
Well, I believe you stated that the further study has indicated that you possibly can do that, correct?
Yeah, we're looking at tapering, and final, once we get into design of that road, we're looking at tapering that slightly to the east, that road, to, to provide additional room there. That's what, that's what their intent is, yeah.
Almost the thoroughfare, the main road would stay the same, and you would put the turning lane south of that?
No, oh. No, you're talking about on Anthony, then. I'm talking about 236.
No, I'm talking 236. They're saying your turning lane, they're saying you can't add a, I'm not so long to you, so I-
I think you're talking about entrance on, on, off of Anthony into our neighborhood.
No, he's talking 236.
Oh, 236. Oh, yeah, you're right. There is no rule on 236, correct?
There's no blister that can be added there.
Right, correct. I thought you were on, I'm sorry, I was misunderstanding. I thought you were on Anthony going into our neighborhood.
No.
Okay, okay. 236, okay.
I was talking about 236, Chris.
Okay. You're, you're correct. That is, you're correct. That is too tight of their inch of bridge.
Okay.
So, maybe you go around that turn.
I don't have any.
Questions?
All right.
So, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, guys. All right. We're gonna move on to the comments by citizens. Is, has everyone who intends to speak filled out a blue slip? If not, could you please and get it up to us?
All right.
I just wanna keep it orderly.
I'm older than y'all are.
So, sorry, is that better?
I can't hear.
Is, is that better?
Yes.
Is that what that is?
It'd be easier for me.
Sorry, you know, it's on this one.
You know, you got there over here.
And then, you put a bump out, so that if this car stops, turns, the traffic can continue going around. That's the blister, because it pumps out like a blister.
Okay. I, I just, that bump out's what I call it.
Yeah, as opposed to deceleration, you know, which is when you're, you're going the right way and turn in.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're the lucky, there you are. All right, just as a reminder, step to the podium, state your name and address, and then, we're going to keep it at 90 seconds for individual. Are you waving your red?
All right, my name is Rick Hahn. I live on Cameron Circle. Back when I had to take continuing education to keep my insurance license, the instructor would often say, "If you want to get to the root of the situation, follow the money." So, who really benefits from a decision of approval? Certainly not these residents of Jackson Township, they have no vote on you guys determining what their future's going to be like. Their only official say in the matter was input on a $50,000 taxpayer-funded comprehensive plan, and we know what that is showing. I see a landowner who's about to make a lot of money at the expense of a lot of people in this room, a struggling utility district that's about to get 170 much-needed hookups, and of course, Estridge Homes. So, my question to you is, whose best interests are you going to follow? Estridge Homes or the people of Jackson Township?
Hello, Devon Shear, 3916 East 226th Street. I mean, obviously, from tonight, there's a lot of questions here regarding flooding. I don't know if you know, I live just on, across the bridge there, on 226th Street, and that floods all the time. And putting homes up there, 170 or 180, whatever it ends up being, is not good for me, my property. Because Jones Creek comes by me, and Hinkle Creek comes right there, and all this would be going in there. Now, if you drive by there, when you got three or four inches of rain, you see it flood. Now, what's it going to be like when this is added? My other concerns is fire. You're eight, nine miles from the fire department. Believe me, I know. My house burnt down. We don't have fire departments out there. We know that, that's why we live out there, because you don't want this around. So, my comment on that is, in addition to that, is police, emergencies, you're out there in nowhereland. You've got Sheridan, Cicero, Westfield, Noblesville. You're in the middle. So, that's my concern. So, please vote no.
Scott Griffin, 27890 North Anthony Road. I disapprove of any development going out there. The flooding where he's talking about, I don't know if you guys have been out there and seen it or not, right there, 276th and Anthony, just to the north of there, them apartments there just flood something terrible when it starts raining and stuff. And what they're talking about, is it going to be backing up even further for the people? What about the people farther south of them? And my other question is, which he just brought it up, I need to know what law you guys are running under to be voting outside your guys' city limits, because we have no authority over you. You have every bit of authority over us out, out there. We have no say what you guys do. Everything that I've looked at and studied, I can't find anything where you guys have the jurisdiction to be doing that. It talks about two miles out and everything else. So, I think it's not fair for us, as Jackson Township residents, to be pushed aside and not have no voting power. Last thing I knew is in the United States, whereby gets to vote. I understand about the towns, get a vote inside their towns and everything else, but we have nothing. You guys have everything on us. So, no, I don't want any more houses out there. I've left here and counted 100 cars from Cicero 231. So, just like the Lennar Project, you put 100 more cars through here, you guys are screwed. You guys need to worry about the infrastructure right here and try to figure out what's going on first, then build out. This is the first time I ever seen anything going out. The only thing it fits is the district out there, and I'm in that district, and I don't like the district, period. That's all I say.
Aaron, do you want to comment at all on jurisdiction in the jointer agreement?
Yeah, under Indiana law, townships do not have the authority to have zoning. The only way there can be zoning in a township is either it defaults to the county zoning or by a jointer agreement, which is where the township and a town that's in the township decide to put a zoning district together. And that's what's happened here. It happened back in the early 1970s. There was a vote at the time, because it had to be put on the ballot in order for it to be approved by the township, and that's how this came to be. It's under Indiana Code 3674. The 1200 series spells out how jointer agreements work and how they're structured, but this is the only option unless the township wanted to fall under the county zoning. And so, that's how we are here.
Mr. Dunmire?
Gerald Dunmire, 2840 East 236th Street, Cicero. The decision before you concerning the Estridge subdivision is simple. Does the petition coincide with the comp plan and subdivision ordinances? It does not. The subdivision ordinance states to avoid scattered, illogical, and uncontrolled subdivisions of land. This location perfectly fits that description, so the variance should not be permitted. Please follow the comp plan that you worked so hard to create. The comp plan designates ideal areas near Cicero for our 1, 2, and 3 developments. A few of many unanswered questions about the subdivision will affect our rural environment include the effects on wetlands, the creek, the reservoir, traffic, crime, and noise in our rural area. Until these and other questions can be answered, no subdivision should be approved anywhere in unincorporated areas of Jackson Township. I don't want this variance approved because I value the rural life that I moved here to obtain, and don't want it devalued by replacing farmland with a subdivision. Don't succumb to any pressure the county may be applying because they need flushes. Please vote no. Thank you for this opportunity.
My name is Amanda Egler. I live at 5228 East 225th Street, Noblesville, Indiana. This is the third time I've spoke on this Estridge development. I feel like most of us probably sound like a broken record at this point, but I encourage you as the board to listen to the residents, listen to the opinions. It seems pretty overwhelming, from my point of view, and the people I've seen speak in this room, to listen to that comprehensive plan that we spent a lot of money to do. And, you know, down the road, if we don't feel like we're heard, down the road when Cicero wants to do voluntary annexations and other things, and get people out there on board with Cicero, if we don't feel like we're heard, understood, and our opinions are valued, we're not going to want to do that bad. So, I think it's important that you guys vote no.
Forgive me if I say this wrong, I can't totally read the writing. James, is it Ganey? Ganey? Your turn.
My name is James Ganey. I'm a retired engineer, electrical, so I have a lot of sympathy for Mr. Bryant, what he's going through. I live at 200, or 33993 East 226th Street, for two years now. It was very pleasant when we first got here. Then, they closed 236. It wasn't pleasant anymore. Now, it's going to get more unpleasant, and everything that's been said by the people ahead of me, they stole my thunder. That's what I wanted to say. It doesn't meet the comp plan, it doesn't meet the subdivision. It, it just seems to be the wrong development in the wrong place. Thank you.
Again, forgive me here, Mr. Mole or Mel? I can't. Did I get it right one of the times? Mel? Okay.
My name is Duane Mail. I live at 23581 Colt Way in Cicero. Thanks for taking, having the opportunity for us to speak tonight. I'm here as a concerned resident to share what I believe is the proposed zoning change does not align with our community's vision in the comprehensive plan. First, the comprehensive plan, as you have noted, was based on extensive public input and highlights key community priorities, none of which are reflected in this rezoning request, specifically preserving a rural atmosphere and maintaining a farming community. I mentioned the fact that there's a preservation area, and that's true, but those are areas that can't be built on anyway. The proposed change from agriculture land to our three medium-high density is for village and urban areas. We live in a rural area. This is rural agricultural land. Why would we want to build urban-sized lots in an agricultural area? These are all rural areas. We want to preserve that. Residential zoning directly contradicts that vision. Creating an urban subdivision in a rural area undermines the very atmosphere we've committed to protect in the comprehensive plan. Additionally, the future land use map on page 31 of the comprehensive plan doesn't even include any high-density zoning in there. It shows some medium-density zoning on the other side of the bear slide area, but that's it. There's no other high-density zoning. Next, the comprehensive strategy emphasizes encouraging infill development and reuse of vacant land over greenfield development. Page 100 explicitly states infill development is preferred, meaning we should be building out from the city, not necessarily out in the middle of the agricultural area. And then, the last point I want to make is just leapfrogging. The comprehensive plan warns against leapfrogging, which is just a pattern of growth where new development bypasses available land closer to existing infrastructure, creating fragmented, discontinuous development. This zoning change is a textbook example of leapfrogging, as it's miles from a similarly zoned areas, and introduces high-density zoning where none currently exists in Jackson Approving these zoning changes just would contradict the core principles of what we had laid out in the comprehensive plan and express wishes of the community based on all the feedback that was put into the comprehensive plan. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. It's either Carrie or Cory Thielen. I assume it's Cory?
Yes. Hi, my name's Cory Thielen. I live at 4301 East 236th Street in Cicero. My wife and I live directly in front of the proposed build site east of Demming. For over six months, we, our neighbors, and over 100 community members have fought this development. Estridge never approached us or talked to us about it, but we have attended every single meeting that we could, voiced every opinion and opposition we had, and jumped through every hoop that was thrown at us. The overall consensus is very clear, we do not want this. But despite this fact, certain members of the zoning board ignored the wishes of the community and attempted to push through with a favorable recommendation first. Thankfully, the quorum decided against it, and it was pushed through with a no recommendation or non-recommendation. Just like everyone else that attended that night, we felt, we left feeling angry and defeated. I am here to tell you that the non-recommendation is not only blatantly inaccurate, but it's a slap in the face of every single citizen of Jackson Township who's in the same position that we are in. Our voices are not being heard. What is the point of a comprehensive plan if you're going to ignore it and do what you want? What is the point of a community forum if those zoning board members would rather scroll on their phones or laptops than pay attention to the person speaking to them in front of them right now? How fair is it to use your lot of time to try and explain the burden of six months of anxiety, anger, and frustration? We ask you to vote no on any rezoning or new development plans for this area, and give us a reason to believe this community still cares about each other and nonprofits. Thank you.
Guys, we're using our laptops to take notes on everything that's being said here.
I was referring to this planning board, not you guys.
Andrew Snyder?
Andrew Snyder, 4111 East 236th Street. I'm two doors down from Cory. I have 90 yards that shares with the Estridge subdivision. No one has talked to me about it. No one said, "Hey, how can we make this better?" They're right in my backyard. With that being said, too, the roads can't handle it, the traffic can't handle it, and no one in the audience wants it. So, how can you vote yes, something that's so unpopular? Thank you.
Sean Holstein?
I'm Sean Holstein, 22900 Demming Road. I think the bottom line of what you're hearing tonight is that this proposed development is just strictly in the wrong location. I think the Estridge folks are good folks, they build good homes, but there are numerous issues for those of us that live in the area. Issue number one, again, is it's not in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Issue number two, drainage, you've heard a lot about drainage. My, my property specifically would be dramatically affected by this. I don't, I think no matter how you slice it, there's going to be more water flow in our direction. You can time it however you want, but there's going to be more water flow in our direction. So, that is going to be a serious problem, and frankly, putting Estridge in charge of working on a large portion of my property and other folks' property to supposedly fix the issue doesn't give me a lot of comfort. Finally, traffic, just drive up and down Demming Road right now with a detour, and you'll, you'll see. I almost got ran off the road driving here tonight, just because it's a narrow road. You put 300 cars up and down that road more each day, along with construction traffic over the next several years, and it's, there's going to be issues. There's been a lot of near-miss accidents over the last six months. So, this is just not a good idea. Bottom line is, I would ask that you would just align with your community. You can hear it tonight, you can see all these folks here tonight, everyone is saying the same thing. So, please align with your community and vote no. Thank you.
Kimberly Chance, 3161 East 246th Street. I just want to state that I'm very, very proud to be a part of the community that sits in this room tonight, and the residents that showed up on the 14th of May and the 11th of June, and wrote multiple, multiple letters, sharing with you all and with the comprehensive planning board what this community needs from you, what they desire. Right now, the community understands that we do not have a vote on this board, we do not have representation in Jackson Township. Tonight, we're going to find out if this community can have any sort of confidence in the comprehensive plan, after tonight, after tonight's vote. Estridge is on record, on a video podcast, stating that Cicero is the newest area where growth is anticipated. This community is not foolish, we're not stupid, we understand the stakes are enormous. This is just one, the first one of many, and I'm going to ask what so many have asked before, please do the right thing for this community and listen to the Jackson Township residents, who will be directly affected, not you all who live in Cicero, but those of us who live in the township. Thank you.
Did I get that right? Did I pronounce that right?
Good enough.
Burden to be French. Honorable members of Cicero Town Council, our family resides on a combined 58 acres.
Honorable members of Cicero Town Council, our family resides on a combined 58 acres that border the proposed development to the south of both parcels, being considered for the rezoning for the purpose of the proposed Estridge development. I'm not here to speak ill of Estridge. They are indeed a good company, good people. That's not in question. What is in question is the couple of concerns that we continue to have and continue to hear in each meeting, that a favorable vote would grant, and that this may be hasty, possibly even detrimental to the area. Number one, the Jackson Township reorg exploration actively in public meetings to gauge public interest. To me, this is something that's ongoing. This is something that's the heart of America. And to make a decision at this point to allow this as a first in the Jackson Township, which may be opening the floodgates to further development into this beautiful township, is of concern to me. It's very logical, reasonable to be so. Secondly, the traffic impact study at 236th and Demming. That's a big one for me, because I spent a lot of time talking to Dave Lucas. I think, I think the impact study came to a hasty opinion. They used data that wasn't current because 236th was closed, at where they needed to do their homework. But more importantly, it's something that Dave said. Dave's a great guy. But when he used the word educated guess in an impact study, I was concerned. And that comment was this: We just don't think people will travel south on Demming and light a 226th, because access to 31 is now denied it. But anyone traveling down 226th knows it's used for many other things, many other accesses. And finally, just the Revis Carson drain, that's right behind my house. I'm right at the bottom of my hill. And I've been there 13 years. And when it rains and floods, it gets 20 feet wide. It becomes a creek. There's nothing there until the rain, and then it's a creek. I can tell you how many inches we've got based on how wide my Revis Carson drain is behind my house. They reworked it, and it's still the same. So thank you so much for just your willingness to hear me and everyone here tonight, and ask that you would seriously consider, contemplate some of these things, and whether it's a little too early to make a decision like this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Stephen Chance?
Stephen Chance, 3161 East 246th Street. The residents of Jackson Township do not get a vote for Cicero positions. We count on you to protect us. The overwhelming majority of Jackson residents have said no to this project. Now, the people who do vote for you, Cicero residents, how has this decision could affect them? Have you polled them to see if they are okay digging into their wallets and purses to support and pay for this project? Because you're going to have to pay for services in that area. They're also going to have to pay for, well, you're going to get more homes, means more kids, you're going to get a school referendum. So my question is, are they willing to pay for school referendum and more taxes? Have you asked your constituents if that's what they want? And do they realize their financial impact of what's going to go on out there if you vote yes? You recently adopted a new comprehensive plan for Cicero and the surrounding areas. Why would you immediately vote on a project outside of those guidelines? A lot of tax dollars and hundreds of man-hours were spent to develop a clear path forward for development. And the first project out of the gate is in complete violation of that. How does this justify a time and expense? How can anyone value your judgment moving forward if you vote yes? Please vote no and demonstrate that you value your community. Please vote no and demonstrate you value Jackson Township community. Please vote no and demonstrate that you value your integrity by sticking to the comprehensive plan. And finally, please vote no and demonstrate that you are not a pawn of the utility board, i.e. the Hamilton County Commissioners.
Just to be clear, as far as it goes with the utility board, we've had zero discussions with the county relating to the utility district out there in this neighborhood.
That's not correct. I have, I mean, I've reached out to them to get some information.
Okay. All right. I have not.
I've had communication to get information about routes and what it looks like, so.
Landy Strand?
My name is Landy Strand, 21911 Flippins Road, Cicero. The town of Cicero and other neighboring cities have noise ordinances that would prevent the use of firearms for target practice or hunting. They also arguably prohibit some farming operations, with Cicero and Westfield not as restrictive as Noblesville. I've read that a farmer in Noblesville was cited for running his equipment in his field after 10:00 PM. With neighborhoods, HOAs, and PUDs come noise ordinances. Jackson Township does not currently have a noise ordinance. We have unique opportunities for our residents to farm unhindered by time constraints or decibel levels of their equipment. We also have the unique opportunity for our residents to engage in legal hunting and target practice. It is important to preserve those time-honored rights that provide character to Jackson Township. My hope is that this petition will be voted no. If it is approved, then I request that the town council also make provision that farming and use of firearms will not be restricted in any way now or in the future. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody that filled out a blue slip that I missed? I think I got through all of them. Got one in the back? All right. Come on up. I apologize about that. What was the name?
I was, plan on speaking, but.
Oh, gotcha.
My name's Joanie Mail, Duane's wife. I live at 23581 Coltway. There's a couple of things, actually, that I wanted to bring up quickly that no one has actually talked about. I did leave a message with Amar Hall. I believe he represents us. Now, we live on 236th. I'm not sure what the rule is for the sidewalk. We didn't realize when we bought it, we were going to have a sidewalk. Having said that, there's golf carts, electric bikes, and I don't know how that works, because they can actually go pretty fast. Maybe you're having a problem in town as well. But I had dirt bikes at night when I'm walking out to my rural mailbox. Almost hit me. Young kids. This is before this subdivision would be to go in. I can only imagine if it goes in, it would be way worse. I'm a careful driver. I've actually had, trying to pull out of my private road, young boys hit me. I don't even know. I called, made a complaint to the sheriff, mainly because I don't want to have the trauma of me hitting a kid when he's, when he is in violation of the path. So there seems to be a real vague area of how the pathway is enforced currently, let alone if this subdivision goes in. Estridge, I'm sure, I know they build good homes. I live very close. You will walk outside of my rural home and see this subdivision. No one has contacted me. My neighbor will be right next door to the retention pond that they are planning on putting in. She has not been contacted. I don't know. And then the other thing, left-hand turn on 236th. Please let me finish this. This is actually a safety concern. My older boy was coming home at night. It's pitch black. He happened to see a scooter at night. And he, his choices were, do I go fast? Faster, over the speed limit to get the guy off my butt so I can make a turn? Because there's a scooter at night? Thankfully, he didn't hit the scooter. There's no lights out there. I'm not saying I want the lights, but the pathway is something that no one's really brought up, that is only going to get worse. And I don't want to be the person to hit someone. Even if I'm in the right, I'm going to have to live with that. I really hope you guys think about, is this the proper place to put it? I'm su, and if there were five acres, I would love it. No one wants to do anything like that. I lived in the country for a reason. So please, I hope you listen and look at the comprehensive plan and follow it, because we put a lot of time in. In the last meeting we went to, at the end of it, I looked at my husband, and I'm like, I don't think anything we said mattered. And I, and I understand you have to look at all sides, but I really hope you listen to us. Because he's very busy tonight. He will be working late to come to this meeting. Several of our neighbors said they've kind of thrown, they don't think it's worth it. They think the decision's been made. Please at least represent us and our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there are no more comments by citizens, we'll go ahead and move along to miscellaneous.
Hang on, I do have a question for, we have to vote on this, too.
Joe, show us if there's any comments not related to Estridge at some point.
That's, that's where the blue slips would have came in play. But does anybody have any comments not related to Estridge?
So, Aaron, I mean, there was a good point. Firearm and noise ordinances.
Well, our noise ordinance only applies within our municipal boundaries.
Correct.
And so the only way our ordinance would ever apply out there is if at some point it became part of the town. Currently, it's under whatever the county's ordinance is. And the county does have a noise ordinance. I don't know, I've never dealt with it that much, so I don't know what's in it. But right now, it's county ordinances that would control out there. I think the county's ordinance is designed for the country.
You have a question?
I have a question about, it's not Estridge, although they brought it up, about this ordinance. Aaron, if you look at the alleged new ordinance that the county put in about the utility district, and people having hooked up and not hooked up, and you have some insight for that, and, and I'm just wanting to see if anybody's actually looked into it to see what the fine details are, or is this just a wraparound for something else to bring it up and to force us into hooking up?
Aaron, let me go first, and you can follow up, okay?
Sure.
So this is a major concern of mine. I mean, I don't want to force anybody out of their homes because they have to hook up. So we've had multiple discussions. I've sent a letter to the county, and you can call me crazy, I'm at a point where I am comfortable. I do, whether you believe it or not. I love this community. That includes Jackson Township, and I want to represent us all. So we've had a quarterly meeting with, we have quarterly meetings, two council members and the county, to go over multiple different items. This has been a hot topic in those meetings. Their engineering company, Westler Engineering, we've had deep discussions about this. That's where this policy has come out about the force main in that ordinance. So what they have communicated, I was hoping the policy would have a little more teeth to it, but what they have communicated is directly around the Estridge neighborhood, gravity drains only fill inside that neighborhood. So they are not going out to any adjacent neighbors. So that's the first part. So only within Estridge will that, will those funnel to their lift station. Their intent, the county's intent, and you see that in the policy, is the, I'll read the policy verbatim, verbatim here. Give me a second.
I'm sorry. I thought someone said it was the ordinance, and you're calling it this.
Well, there is, there is an ordinance. I'm sorry, there is an ordinance. It's Hamilton County Rural Utility District Ordinance 71425A. And on page 17, it says a property owner is not required to connect to a force main. However, the board may approve an application if the property owner voluntarily applies to connect under extraordinary conditions. That, that's what's stated in that ordinance. Hang on a second. Let me finish this. So what, the way that I interpret that and the communication that I've had, both with Westler Engineering and Mark Harebrand and others, CJ as well, is force mains are off limits unless you reach out. Twilight Hills, there's two individuals in Twilight Hills that have reached out. So they want to connect. So what that means is there has to be a low-pressure system that connects to the force main, and the county is willing to do that. The one piece for them that I'm not sure of, originally, Westler Engineering said it would only be those two individuals, because they're in the front. I have not received confirmation back that it's not for everybody in that, in that development. So I can't say whether it is or is not. I can tell you the original communication, and Joe, you were there, the original communication was just those two homes that wanted to connect up. Other than that, the force mains are, you can't connect gravity drains, or they're not forcing low-pressure systems to connect to it. Can that change in the future? I mean, who can, who knows what about in the future, right? But I, I believe they are looking for the best use of their funding to connect to. I truly believe that. Otherwise, I, I wouldn't stand behind this. So you can call me crazy. Like I said, I feel comfortable with what's in place and the communication and conversations that I have had with them.
Can I just verify? Do you have something in writing then that states that no one has to hook up?
It says it in that ordinance number.
So where do we define that ordinance? What is the ordinance number again? We all have pre-urentals.
It is Hamilton County, it's HCRUD, ordinance number 7-14-25-A.
Page 17.
And to address your question from a legal side, under the code, if somebody is within 300 feet of that line, they can be required to either connect or to show that their septic system is not failing. That's where we get into the inspections. Now, what they did was, because their attorney's opinion is they can't waive that, but they came up with a workaround, which is they defined that the lines that you can connect to are the low-pressure lines, not the high-pressure lines. And so the high-pressure lines are the lines that go down and extend the mains out. And so they're saying that if you are along that, and that comes within 300 feet of your house, that does not trigger the requirement that you, they have to send you notice, or you have to get a study showing that your septic is not failing, and it doesn't put you online to connect. The only people that would be put in that position would be if it's the low-pressure lines, which according to their plan, there's going to be, they're going to, I don't know if it's a grid or what, they're going to lay out the high-pressure lines, and then when they have a development, for example, if Estridge was approved, they would run a low-pressure line straight, straight to there.
I hear what you're saying, and I think just to your point, we've been dealing with this utility district for about three years. We have been told one thing, and then something else happens. I appreciate, Eric, that you have confidence. I will tell you that my neighbors and myself and everyone in this room, A, should not have confidence in the county based on other things that they have said that have not been true, and B, need something in writing, ironclad, from an attorney, not Westler Engineering, who also donated to the Harebrands campaign. I'm sorry, that there, we need a, an objective person and courage to give us, because this community has been burned, and we are being burned repeatedly over this utility district. So agree that you have that confidence. I think, to your question, it is all wrapped up here, because we're all concerned that a community goes in and the rules change.
I have spent hours being productive, trying to find solutions to these issues. So I have spent hours working on this, and I was not comfortable. The last thing that I want to see is somebody moved out of their house because of this expense. And I am personally at the point where I am comfortable, based on, on what we have. And I would argue that, I would say, having productive conversations with the people, with the county, I would challenge if there are many people that have had as many as I've had with them.
Agreed. We need improvement.
I'm sorry, what?
It used to be just 200 feet in the Brooklyn plan. Then you had to hook up, too. But I heard that B and C wasn't getting all the funding they needed. They went back and redesigned it to go out 300 feet and get us in with it.
I, I don't know about that. I think it's, I think it's a state statute.
Yeah, 300, it comes from state code.
Yeah, I read that code, and it's 300 feet to the property line, not the house. Not the house. So if your house sits way back, you don't get past. The state statute, and I'm on my line by paragraph, said 300 feet. The state statute, and I'm, I'm lying by paragraph, said three hundred feet to your property line to where the line is.
So this ordinance...
Doesn't make a difference, doesn't help. So if you could just see the ordinance, it'd be good to go through that with an attorney that is versed in utilities. It'd be good for the community to feel comfortable, and to feel comfortable with what we're facing, since we're the ones who will be hooked up. I don't believe in Cicero in town, you have to deal with it, but we all do. And so, it would be great if we could feel as comfortable. But we're not in those conversations or those meetings, and we haven't seen the ordinance, or the paperwork, or the details. And that was my only point with that, is that, that would be great if we could also have that same level that you feel.
The ordinance was available from the fourteenth, July fourteenth?
I'm sorry, did we get a letter saying that it was available?
When you were around, Kimberly, you knew that this was passing. This, this was discussed at the Plan Com-
Eric, you told me it was on the first, and when I talked to you on the first, you still had not received any paperwork from the county. So if that has passed since then, I appreciate that. And then, if I'm not looking for it, I don't know that. So I will, now that I know about it tonight, I will look at it, but I don't have the confidence sitting here that you do. And I don't think anyone in this room should.
This, this was discussed, that they were passing this ordinance at the Plan Commission, the last Plan Commission meeting.
That they were looking to pass it, yes. They have not passed it yet.
On the fourteenth, that's correct. So you did know about it?
I knew that you were, they were looking at it.
Okay, so, yeah, yes, sir, you had a question? I'm, I'm sorry.
I do want to point out, in the country, when you're not in the, a city, it's three hundred feet from the house or structure. Yes, this is from Indiana Code. I'm looking at the Indiana Code. Under Indiana Code, eight dash one dash two dash one twenty-five, if you go down and you look, it says that there's an available sanitary sewer within three hundred feet of a property line. If that line is located in a consolidated city, which this would not be, is adjacent to a body of water, like a lake, a river, or reservoir, or a part of a subdivision of land that is divided and proposed to be divided into smaller lots. For all other properties, it is the improvement or the structure from which the sewage or waste will be discharged. And, and so, now, that's a little better, but that, that's coming out of Indiana law, so. Right. Well, and it makes sense, because in, in the city, the property lines are much smaller, and that's why it's a different standard.
So then what they've done as well, they, they are not planning on running, it doesn't make sense financially for them to run gravity drains all through Jackson Township. That's correct. They are gonna use, they are going to use forced mains to connect to lift stations that then... The theory would be, they, I think their theory would be that neighborhoods would drain to it, to those forced mains, and go from there.
Thank you for that expression. I apologize for being long.
It's a very sensitive subject, and the last thing that I personally want to do, or these other council members, is to move people out of their house, because they can't afford that connection. I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Are they gonna do the domain on people's property, put it in lift stations, or manholes and all that stuff?
I, I can't answer that. No, I do not know. I know, I know roughly where a proposed lift station would be, on roughly two thirty-six. And I know a proposal of the, the route that we are not to share. I, I was asking questions, um, at, at this time, so. You guys have any other questions?
I had, I had one more question for Estridge, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Can you just confirm on the improvements for the drainage? What county group, agency will you work with on that? And, uh, just to maybe explain a little more, do they design that? Um, do we design, do you guys design it? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, the Ha- Hamilton County Surveyor, uh, has designed the plans with their consulting engineers. And those have been prepared for years now, last, last couple of years. So those will be updated with obviously their approvals, um, and we'll be following those.
So, tell me if I have this right. So they, the county, before you guys were around, has kind of been working on various plans to help mitigate some of the challenges out here. And so that predates you.
Correct.
And then, if this project moves forward, you will basically execute what the county surveyor's team has decided is the right solution, and you guys will finance and execute that.
Correct.
Thank you.
The plan would not have included development, though, as originally, right?
You said, the plan's being updated, is that what you said?
Yeah, the drain continues on south of our development, um, about a mile. But anything on our properties, obviously, well, that'll be modified. That's why we're building a whole separate pond right now. Uh, we're planning to build a whole separate pond to accommodate, um, all the off-site drainage that would come through and pass through down the drain.
So is that-
To control that release.
Is that design of that drain accounting for this proposed development? Is that design done yet, or is that still in process with the surveyor?
Yeah, that's, we haven't gone into our construction documents phase yet, but that will be, that'll be done through the construction document phase. Dennis?
No more.
All right. If there's no more questions, um, we'll move on to council discussion regarding the Estridge development prior to going to vote. Should there be a motion for a vote? I guess Dennis will start with you. What are your thoughts?
Any questions, Jane?
I'm sorry.
Any questions?
I already asked that.
Okay. So you're waiting for, you're waiting for a-
No, I'm not. No, I'm, I'm looking to have a council discussion on the, the Estridge development. And I just want feedback and, and thoughts.
I wish there was a blister at least, uh, around the Anthony Road. I understand how those roads offset, how close the bridge is, that it's, makes it, uh, difficult to figure that in, but... That's the one disappointment, I think, the drain, the Rivas Carson drain. Uh, I did go to the county department, and I spoke with the county regarding this. Their comments was that the board probably would not, uh, for the foreseeable future, do anything, uh, to deal with the Rivas Carson drain. If they were to do it, it would probably, to the extent of what they've approved with Estridge, would be in the ballpark of around eighty-eight hundred dollars an acre, uh, for all those living in that, uh, range of Rivas Carson. So, from that standpoint, I think it's probably a, uh, a major improvement with what Estridge is doing. Other than that, my, uh... No, that's, I guess that's the whole comment I have with it.
Eric, your thoughts?
So for me, I've personally spoken with many people, and anybody I come across, um, Jackson Township, Cicero. I ask, I want to know. I mean, this is one group of people that are ultimately affected. But I've had a lot of yeses, I've had nos as well. Um, it's, it's, it's really interesting. I've had yeses from Jackson Township and from Cicero, I've had no's from both. There are a lot of concerns. So, when we did the Lennar discussion, when we had the Lennar discussion, there were a couple key items that had to be addressed. One was density. So, that proposal was somewhere around three point six homes per acre. Is roughly what, seven hundred and, I think I did seven twenty divided by the two hundred acres? That's roughly three point six homes per acre. At that time, um, when it was voted down, we asked what would be reasonable? And the feedback was two hundred to two hundred and fifty homes for that area. So, this Estridge development is roughly at one, you guys can correct me, roughly at one point four homes per acre. Our ordinance calls out for ag one point, one home per one point five acres. So it's about half of what the requirement is, is, is what this is when you look at the entire land use.
Hold on a second, I think you might have stated that wrong. It's, it's one home per one point four acres, correct?
Ours is one point four homes per acre.
One point four homes, okay. Then, I'm glad you clarified that.
So, it's, it's about double what the standard says for the amount of acreage. So that's one thing that goes into my decision, that's in the back of my mind. This development, I, I hear a lot about, well, this opens the door to the next neighborhood, and the next neighborhood, and the next neighborhood, and the next neighborhood. To me, this sets a very high standard of what we collectively in Jackson Township are expecting in this area. That's, that's what it means to me, not that it's opening up to the next neighborhood or the next neighborhood. So to me, it says, we are looking for this standard for development in our area. So I think that sets a very high bar for future development as well, whether it be closer to Cicero or outside of Cicero. We talked about the concerns of the utility hookup. I'm very concerned, and I've done a lot of homework with that. And again, I mean, I, I know there's skepticism, um, the way things have happened with the U- Hamilton County Rural Utility District. I feel that they are trying to make it work. And honestly, I think a lot of the efforts from here have, have made some of that difference, and as they go through and figure the costs and things out, they're, they're really trying to make it work, is my belief. And that's why, in that ordinance, you see that statement. Like I said, I do have concerns about Twilight Hills. I did not get my feedback. I know that there are individuals in there that want connection, and that'll be a low-pressure system that connects. I don't know about the end, the original communication was that they wouldn't be forced to, to do that. I don't have anything in writing from that. Um, there's been issues about corporations purchasing homes and renting. I think, at these price points that they've communicated, that is a detractor. Aaron, from a homeowners association standpoint, and is there, I know there, when, when homeowners association comes up, are there some, is there something that can be put in that says a minimum or a maximum number of homes can be rented?
Yeah, so, an HOA can adopt rules like that governing rentals within that.
Would Estridge be willing to do something to that fact, to limit the number of homes that could be rented? Sorry, I should have fasted earlier.
That's okay. No, um, we've not had to do it, or we've not done it before, because, again, the prices of homes, it's hard to have a renter in there. Occasionally, someone moves out of state, they know they're coming back. In a couple of years, they might rent it out, so it onesie twosie, it happens. The one limitation we have put on, and we would intend to, is have it a minimum of a three-month rental, so that you don't have an Airbnb-type, um, rental. We, we're, I think, open to having some kind of cap on the number of rentals overall. You know, I don't want to create hardship for people that live there and
Understood.
need to rent it out. Um, that's, that, that's the reason we haven't put it in before, and haven't been asked to, but, um, we'd be willing to put some kind of cap in there, in our HOA documents.
Okay. All right, thank you. This development would, it's, it's not done at this time, but it would have an HOA, yes?
So how can you vote on it, when you don't even know what's going to?
The, the HOA?
Yeah.
So that comes, so this is just the rezoning and the PUD. The HOA goes back to other boards for additional discussions and approval?
Who holds them accountable for what the, the quality of the homes and the sales prices?
Our planning inspector.
And what happens if they don't, if they build homes that are a lesser value than that? It's too late.
So, the, the question is, what happens if they don't do, meet, meet the standards?
What happens if they can't sell their homes at the price points they want, that they may not be marketable? You're just relying on them to tell you what they think they can sell it for. How do you hold them accountable?
For me, it's not the price point. That's an estimate from their standpoint. It's in the PUD, it talks about the building materials, it talks about the square footage, it talks about all the...
Architectural standards.
Let's say they can't, you decide they can't sell those homes at, with those criteria. Who holds them responsible for the level of homes that they're telling you they're going to build?
If, if they don't meet what the ordinance requires, they're in violation of the ordinance, and our planning department would become involved, if that was an issue.
So the ordinance is specific as to specifically what types of homes-
It has building standards in there, it, it, it talks about the size of types of materials, the facades. There's a lot of detail in, in that ordinance.
And the size of the homes.
Minimum square footage.
Yeah, there's minimum square footage.
That's why it's good to put a rental pass in there, because that way, you don't end up having these rentals that they can't get the price.
Absolutely agree, absolutely agree. So that's why the question was asked, so.
Were the ordinance is ignored by the comprehensive plans?
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Were the ordinance is ignored similar to how the comprehensive plans are ignored?
That, that's not a, that's not a, so, yeah, I'm not gonna address it, it's, it's okay. The, the, the building permit process forces you to have certain, to meet certain design, design standards, is what that does. The comprehensive plan is a... A guide, thank you.
Well, it'd be helpful, I think, to all of us, if you would all articulate why you're willing to violate the comprehensive plan. What benefit is there that causes, that justifies violating what people of Jackson Township have told you that they want, and that everybody agreed just two or three months ago?
So I'm gonna finish my list, if you don't mind. So I personally have an issue as well with, within reason stating how property can be used. As long as, in my reasoning, at least, in, in my head, that it is... I'll just leave it at that. So, for me, based on communicate- So, sorry, Ron, let me finish, please. So within, within this discussion, based on Lennar conversations and other conversations, I, I believe this fits based on those of conversations. Those conversations have changed with some, with some groups, but that, that's for me. Um, that, that's my stance. Again, I've spoken to many people, Ron being one of them. Yes, sir, Ron, what's your, you had a question?
You made that statement to me, um, about you didn't feel comfortable dictating what people could do with their properties. And I came back at you with, if you felt that way, then you shouldn't be setting in the seats you are with the land commission, whatever, because that's the, that's the job description that you assume when you took on this office. So to say that you don't feel comfortable with telling people what they can do with their property, doesn't make sense to me.
If I said I didn't feel comfortable, I have a-
You did. Your exact words.
Okay, so, so it is more as I have a philosophical issue, how about that? So that, that's what I, that's, that's where I stand on this.
So, you know, I've pored over this one, and I'm not just talking, um, Estridge in general, it's every development that comes through. You know, I tend to lean towards, you know, as small a growth as possible. You know, I tend to lean towards, you know, it's smaller growth is possible, you know, that's what I ran on, and that's my philosophy. This one I'm struggling with, because I've had so many challenges approach when it comes to the utility district and what have you, and with the pressures of development up here, and seeing what's coming, and knowing what's potentially in the pipeline. And to echo what Eric says, when it, when it comes to setting a standard of development up here, you know, I look at Lennar and the seven hundred homes that were denied, and that's obviously definitely not what we want up here. But then, you look at the quality of this development that's being proposed up here, and I do look at it opposite of opening the floodgates as far as development. I think it sets the standard for the type of development that will actually be considered up here. So, now, that being said, and with all the things that have come up, the drainage, the Rivas-Carson, is a serious concern. The utility district, which seems to, you know, be working itself out, has always been a major concern. But my fear is, is if we deny everything, and that seems to be the desire up here, is to deny everything, then when a property owner wants to sell his property, what's the first thing they're going to do? Run to Westfield and see if Westfield will voluntarily annex them in, and where's that opened us up? So, in my head, where I'm struggling with all this is, you know, where are we able to give a little to make sure we maintain what we want? So I go, I go back and forth on that a lot, you know, again echoing what Eric said when Lennar was coming through. You know, the comment was, not seven hundred homes, but we'd be more agreeable to two hundred-ish homes, you know?
You've been brave enough with the comprehensive plan, but how else would that?
Well, I was, that was actually the next topic I was going to bring up. I wasn't part of the comprehensive plan committee, but how it was explained to me is that certain areas were intentionally left ag to prevent zoning variances through the BZA and to add protection there, but also leave flexibility to be rezoned if a favorable development came through, you know?
Well, I was part of that, and I didn't hear that.
No, okay, that's how it was explained to me.
That's
What?
No, it's not the place.
Okay.
I believe you heard that, Kimberly.
But it's fine, you guys, I think, have already made up your minds at this point in time, you guys are just talking. I think we figured out where your head is, you just need to know what's out of our heads.
Well, we're actually trying to tell you our thought processes, and we gave you the opportunity to speak in a non-public hearing, so we would appreciate the opportunity to explain what we deal with and what we have to think through in the big picture, you know?
Mr. President?
No, I, I Mr. President, I think we've concluded public comment.
We did conclude public comment. Emily, would you like to comment on your thought process?
I have sat through the planning commission meetings, because I was concerned, I wanted to go into this with knowledge of what was going on and everyone else's concerns. I have spoke to Jackson Township residents, as well as Cicero residents, and, like Eric, some of the residents in both areas were for and against. Most of the Cicero people I spoke to view this as a positive thing, and my thoughts are, we are going to have to have development, it's coming in no matter what. Now, Lennar, Lennar would have been a travesty. The amount of traffic, the amount of kids going into our schools with those seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty homes would have been a real problem. This raises the bar, I'm going to use that term as well, to what we can expect in the future. And the other piece to this is, businesses in Cicero, the restaurants, everything else will benefit from homes coming in. I do have concerns about the drainage, but anything that we have questioned Lennar about, or, I'm sorry, Estridge, you have come back and you've either explained it, or you said that you would change it. So you have been very flexible. So, that's my, my thoughts on it.
Jacob?
I view, much as like has been said already, I think this is a very high-quality development that will really benefit the community, and again, kind of set the standard for some things we'd like to see in this area. I'm excited, I think it's a great place to live, that's why there's so many people here, because we love, we love this community. And to me, it's exciting, the prospect of welcoming new neighbors to the area, to me is a positive thing. Lastly, when it comes to things like traffic and drainage, I think it's incumbent upon us that we have to trust people that specialize in these areas, and so, I can't, you know, none of us are positioned to determine what may or may not work for drainage, other than people that are professionals, that have experience in that area. So I think it's incumbent upon us to rely on our friends at the county surveyor's office and engineers to help make the determinations around roadways and drainage.
Good. Anybody else have any comment? Question? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion. I guess, how do you want to word that? Yeah, I'll let you, whoever wants to say it.
So my motions are in favor typically, so I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number zero eight dash one nine dash two zero two five dash zero three, a rezone request from AG to R three
Before you move
To rezone two parcels from AG Agriculture District to R three Residential Medium Lot, Medium Home District, so to a petition from Estridge Development.
Before we move forward with this motion, and what Eric said, his motions are always in the positives, so when a motion is made, it's presented in that way for the vote. It doesn't mean necessarily he supports it. Can we talk about the process of why we do it in the same meeting, to rezone to R three and then R three PUD, and the protection it provides us, please? You know, I'll let you explain that, Eric.
When you adopt a PD ordinance
Is your mic on?
I think so.
Okay, now, I just need to talk more.
When you adopt a plan development ordinance, you are setting it on top of the underlying zoning district. And so, in order for it to be residential, we require that the underlying zoning district be residential. That is not meant to say that it can only be established on something that was previously zoned residential. And the reason you do that is because the underlying zoning classification is the default. When you adopt a PD ordinance, you establish some special standards, some special construction rules, and other things that are part of that, but anything that is not specifically changed by that defaults to whatever the underlying zoning district is. And so, in order for someone to do a residential plan development, they are required to change the underlying zoning district, the default, to something that's compatible with that. And so if you're wanting to do an R three PD, then you have to change the underlying zoning classification to R three. And that way, we have that default underneath for anything that's not addressed in the PD ordinance.
All right. Now, clarify this for me, it essentially also gives us a layer of protection, where if we were to do the initial rezone to R three, leave this meeting, there was a transfer on the property, the R three zoning would carry with whoever that was transferred to, so it leaves us exposed, where the PUD gives us more control in the situation.
Yes, the PD adds additional requirements, it goes beyond.
That was my point, because some of what has been brought up about, you know, circumventing the process, there's a reason we're doing it like this, and it's to protect us, to make sure we keep the control on that. So I just wanted to give a quick explanation on that, but Eric, please go ahead and move forward with
So there was a motion on the table?
Yep, I have a motion. To Eric.
I will second that.
Okay. And we're going to do a roll call vote, so we're not going to do the typical, you know, all in favor, I opposed, we're going to go down the line each individual council person, and they're going to state their vote. So, I'll start with you.
I approve.
Dennis?
I approve.
Jacob?
Approve.
Emily?
I approve.
And I approve as well, so motion carries five nothing.
Well, let's move to the podium.
I'm sorry? I can't hear you.
We still have one more ordinance to go through.
But it's going to go in though.
I don't know, we have to take a vote, so if you can let us go through that, please.
So all my neighbors, we need to reorder.
Yeah. Emily, you think Jackson You want to go ahead and proceed with your motion?
So I will, I will
That's a fucking joke.
Have a nice evening.
I will address that comment when we're through this, but, so I will
I asked you one question.
No, we're, let us, public comment is over, let us finish, let us finish the meeting, and I'm happy to answer questions after, after the meeting is closed. So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number zero eight dash one nine dash two zero two five dash zero four, a rezone request for R three to PD R three, to rezone the two parcels from R three Residential Medium Lot, Medium Home District to a PD R three Planned Unit Development District.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the Dennis Johnson.
Motion is second, roll call vote. Eric?
I approve.
Dennis?
I approve.
Jacob?
Approve.
Emily?
I approve.
And I approve as well.
Okay, so anything, miscellaneous?
Okay, now that's been done, moving on to miscellaneous, which we have none, comments despite citizens was moved to the front. If there's nothing else to be discussed, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
All.
I opposed. Thank you all very much.